Are we ready?
Yes ma'am, we're done here.
I want to welcome everyone tonight to the March Board meeting. I'm glad to see everybody. It's so, it's been so pretty outside compared to the last couple of months with snow and cold. I guess another front's coming in, but I'm just glad it's better and we're headed towards spring. So if our student representative from Harbor come and we will do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, School Board. Good afternoon. My name is Hallmark Ruiz. I am the Senior Class President for Harbor of 2020, A1. I'm happy to be here and I guess I gotta tell you guys a little about myself. So I came to here in Arkansas in 2008. I started in Walker Elementary, actually. And from there, first to third grade. And then in third grade, I actually moved to Brazil. And then I came back to, in sixth grade, to Helen Tyson Middle School. Then to Central, and now I'm at Harbor. I've been a part of this journey with my family. Here, Ursula Galvez is my mother. And my sister, who is a sophomore at Harbor as well. And they've been part of my journey, which I'm really thankful for. And I think they're gonna continue throughout that. I've been a part of Springdale, so I've been a part of a lot of things throughout Springdale. Middle school, I was very involved. Seventh grade, you know, seventh grade is a very important year for a lot of students. You choose if you're gonna be advanced or you're gonna stay regular. I decided to take the advanced part, which just led to middle school, junior high, and high school. I've taken over 10 AP classes in my career, well, high school transcript. And I hope that will help me in college to prepare me. This year, I'm taking AP Lang, AP Psych, and AP Euro. I try to keep it simple because there's a lot of things going on senior year. This year, my favorite class would obviously be AP Language. Because it has a lot of things to do with what I love, which is debate. And I get to, instead of just using words like I used to, I can actually write them and use the things I already have from previous years. As my teacher says, Mr. Combs, he tells us, this is a class for smarts. And what that means is to use information you already have and you actually write it with it. So it's things that you don't know in the class, but you actually get it from other classes. So it's a really cool class for me. And there's a lot of things I've been a part of, extracurriculars, that helped me get accepted at many universities. And one of those main things is debate. One of those main things why I'm able to talk to you guys, because usually, a lot of kids get scared, you know? Majority of kids. They get frightened when they see people. But debate just allows you to speak to others, debate, articulate your words better, and just be a lot more confident with yourself, which helps you in job interviews, university interviews, and scholarship interviews, to be honest. And one of the things that debate has also led me to is mock trial, which is the thing I just did this weekend. We competed. We have two teams. I am the mock trial team captain this year. So we got to compete in that. And I think we did a pretty good job. And we have the next set in two weeks before spring break. And I think we're gonna get state like we've done all year and go to Nationals. And and that's where mock trial is gonna lead me to my set of next in my career, because I wanna pursue law soon enough. Besides that, I've been a part of extracurriculars such as cross-country, swim, just try to stay active. I've been a part of key club, get some volunteer hours, been part of St. Raphael, try to help there. Just try to get involved to just look like a better resume for universities. And things Springdale has done for me is just have those clubs available for me. You know, there's always a stigma for not to take those courses. There's like this burden, like, at least from my experience, Hispanics. It's sometimes not the, like, you might think like, oh, it's a white thing to do with this thing, or it's not my thing. But I never saw it as that. I just thought, oh, it's another opportunity I can take. And that has helped me get to the places I am. And pretty much, that's pretty much a lot about me.
That's a lot. You don't sound like you have a whole lot of free time.
Yeah, junior year was very stressful for me, you know, like always. And this year, you know, it got more relaxed because of COVID, because teachers have more acceptance of what's going on. But colleges are also more stressful, so it's almost about the same.
Do you know where you wanna go?
Uh, no, I don't know where I'm gonna go. There's a lot of opportunities out there. Uh, yes, I have the U of A and California State. And then my dream school is obviously UCLA. But that'd be hard, especially because scholarships, you know? If you're not low-income, it's kinda, kinda hard to get those big scholarships. I see. I, of course, I've forgotten because it's kinda hard to find people who speak Portuguese here. And I can still understand it perfectly. Like, I watch YouTube videos sometimes, but it's kinda hard not seeing other people, not talking to other people, you forget.
You did a great job. Usually, we have to ask questions to get you to say something.
Oh, no, I just went off the template they gave me and I just took it with me.
That's awesome.
If there are any other
I'll have a question for you. As far as mock trial, what is your role? Are you one of the attorneys? Or are you one of?
So mock trial is just a simulation of, for the people who don't know, it's just a simulation of, of what you do in a trial. It can either be criminal or civil. This year, it's a criminal case. It's about a bar fight and you just have to try to see if they're guilty or not guilty. And I am the lead attorney for Team Carolina. And this year, we competed. It's over Zoom, because of course, in person is kinda hard to do. And you just, it's five minutes for opening, then 25 minutes for direct, 20 for cross. And then you switch for the other side. And you have to do both sides in competition. So you just have to learn for not just one witness, but two witnesses. So it's kinda, it's a team game.
Well, we're sure glad that you're here and we hope to find out where you end up and come back and see us and hopefully come back to Northwest Arkansas to practice law.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, Board, you've had the agenda. Do we have any corrections or additions? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mr. Emerson to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we have the consent agenda with the February financial statements, the out-of-district transfers, and the minutes from February. Is there any additions or corrections to those? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Cleveland?
Yes, I have some good news. We all know Jack Snally. Jack Snally's been in front of you a few times and he's a senior at Harbor. Jack's been honored to be named a delegate for the United States Youth Senate Program. Seen that on Facebook, it's coming around. We hope to have him in April or May come in and talk about his experience. But he's one of only two students out of over 100 applicants from Arkansas to be selected. Jack's will receive a $10,000 scholarship, so we're excited for him. This year's event, which will feature interaction with Arkansas Senators John Boesman and Tom Cotton, a visit with President Joe Biden, and an interview with a Supreme Court Justice, will all be done by Zoom. Typically, they get to go to DC. This year, they're not gonna be able to do that. That's a, that's a bummer for Jack's, but I'm sure he will absolutely be a great representative of our school district in our state. So that was a great honor for Jack. Again, hopefully, we'll have him here in April or May to talk about his, his opportunity in DC. Second portion of my program here is recognize Harbor TV and our advisor, Travis Sherman. Harbor High School Television, led by Travis Sherman, recently received a national Emmy. They did so for a live event in sports broadcasting, which pretty much sealed their position as the top sports broadcast team in the country. The game broadcast at one of them was the 2019 playoff game, Harbor versus Silver Rock. Students competed against thousands of entries across the United States. And the pieces were judged by college instructors and industry professionals. The judges looked at the overall production value, delivery, including the pre-game show, halftime show, post-game show, all the aspects of the delivery. So congratulations goes to Travis Sherman, our advisor, former Nick Blutrel, who's now a graduate, Samantha Lewandowski, Zach Greenwood, Zach DePlante, Victor Cardoza, Jared Park, and of course, Don Tucker. Those are two of the adults, Jared Park and Don Tucker, two adults that work on our, our team as well. In addition to winning that Emmy, Harbor Television won first place in short film for the Student Television Network Convention. Proud of Samantha Lewandowski, Ellen Fink, and Luke Perez. Also, Cameron Bowden took first place in the national program for short film. They, they were tasked with creating a two-minute video and they had five hours to do it. So they did that, did a good job, won first place. Harbor TV's done a great job. Proud of their program, proud of their winning efforts. Winning those Emmys, that's a really good deal. Next, Ms. Cook. About to recognize Chelsea Jennings. We had her last year, or last year, last month. She was a nominee for our, I guess, Assistant Principal of the Year. And now she's up for Nationals and she's one of the top three. So hopefully, we'll be able to bring her back as the national Assistant Principal of the Year. So we're looking forward to that. Recognize Chelsea Jennings, she's now standing as Assistant Principal of the Year. And finally, under my portion, we have Dr. Regina Stuman. Dr. Stuman would like to seek your approval for a school innovation application at Sonora Elementary School. Dr. Stuman?
Good evening. Thank you all for the time and I'm glad I wore my heels because this microphone's so high. When Sonora Elementary opened, it's been 10 years ago, the fall of 2011, we opened with a vision and mission that was very strong about innovating to educate. And at the time, we had the resources, we had the training, we had the support, the tools, that were all very unique to us. That's changed over time. And now, a lot of the things that were unique to us, now everyone has those opportunities, which is phenomenal. But we don't feel like we're living our vision and mission anymore. And so I'm here tonight to request approval for our elementary plan of innovation, as well as approval for the May 1 submission of that to the Commissioner of Education. I think you all have a link to the draft of our strategic plan, but the three overarching goals essentially that comes down to are restructuring the school day to ensure that we have timely intervention and enrichment for all students, increase student agency through choice voice, goal-setting, and learner profiles, and finally, transforming Sonora's culture and climate through the use of trauma-informed social-emotional learning. So we are asking for approval to move forward. We are still in draft form, but we have some audacious goals and we're very excited about the possibilities. Questions you may have?
So will this be like a mirror of Rollins' school?
No, there are different aspects. Actually, Sonora Elementary School will be quite different. Although the facility itself is more traditional, what Dr. Stuman's preparing to do is to get away from some of the standard or traditional concepts that we had. Rollins Elementary School, although it says School of Innovation, doesn't have this status yet.
So will this be just unique for Sonora?
Yes.
Could be done?
It could be replicated across the
It could.
Part, this is first of its kind, right?
Well, we have some School of Innovations in Springdale already. I know next door, our feeder school, Sonora Middle School, is, you know, has this designation. And I think they've already been redesignated as well. So it won't be the first, but what's, what's unique about it is you make the plan that's best for the students you serve. And that's what's unique, is it doesn't have to be the exact same plan. It's what do our kids need? And you're using the data and the information to make that plan.
Westwood Elementary is also Jerry Rogers was here, Dr. Rogers. He applied and was designated.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to
approve the school of innovation application for Sonora.
Yes, approve the school of innovation application for Sonora Elementary.
Cover everything for you?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mr. Hutchinson, to approve the moving forward of the Sonora School of Innovation application. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can't wait to see it.
Thank you all so much. Very excited. We'll be sharing our journey.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Cleveland, as you can see, I saved up all the items for this month. Seems like I have a long list, don't I? The first two items go in connection with each other. As y'all recall, if you've been on the Board, every spring, or actually, a few months before, we have our annual school election. We have to have the Board approve this proposed budget of expenditures. That kinda starts the election cycle. So this year, our election is in May. And so in order to meet the state, what's the word I'm looking for? Deadline. Thank you. In order to meet the state deadline, we have to have this published 60 days prior to the election. So I'm gonna invite Mr. Scott Beardsley up from Beardsley Finance, Public Finance, to talk to us about not only the proposed budget, but also the application for permit to issue bonds.
I always feel like it's my unofficial duty to turn to the student representative and say, you're welcome to stay and listen to me talk about this. Nobody's gonna be attentive, you know? Because I'm usually after the consent, so there's my plug for you tonight. So I just wanna kinda go back to Thursday at the Board Retreat, make sure there's no questions about some of the things we talked about financially. And then I'll walk you through the three motions if the Board's ready to move forward with asking the voters for an extension of the millage. One of the things that Dr. Cleveland and I were talking about is Springdale School District has the reputation of doing more when it comes to building new facilities than what you asked the voters for. So every time that we have asked the voters for millage and gotten an increase, we've not only built the buildings that you've told them you were gonna build, but then you have saved the increased tax dollars as they've come in over time and you have built additional facilities without going back to the voters. And that's one of the reasons you have a lower millage than many of the other school districts here in the state. You kinda run an efficient operation and you're able to do more with that same tax levy. And this concept that we're talking to the Board about follows that same tradition. The district has about $90 million worth of facility needs for its share of projects that are before the State Partnership Board. And the administration has challenged us to come up with a way to raise that money without a tax increase. And so what we talked about on Thursday is potentially asking the voters to extend the existing tax rate for 10 years. And that extension would allow the district to raise its share of the projects without a tax increase. Mr. Ramos, I think it was you who asked during the retreat, when I talked about there's some inefficiency in extending out existing debt and taking the same amount of principal and extending it out further. And the interesting thing in calculating that answer for you is because we're at a time of historically low interest rates, even though we're gonna extend it out for 10 years, if we stay at the bottom of the interest rate range we're projecting, you're actually, you're gonna pay less in interest, which really surprised Kelly and I both, going back over the math of it. If we're at the higher end of the range that we're looking at, it will cost the district about $110,000 more per year in interest over the 30-year period. So it will cost more by extending out the debt, but it's a manageable number to allow you to get the $90 million without a tax increase. So I appreciate you asking that. And the math of it was kind of interesting to work on, on Friday and over the weekend. So I was glad to see that part. As Mr. Hayes mentioned, you're required to present to the voters the annual millage, whether you're asking for a change or not. It's a constitutional requirement. Typically, you just ask for the same thing that you asked for last year and the results of the election do not matter. Because if your millage is defeated, it reverts to the previous approved ballot. This year will be the same, even though you're asking for an extension. If the voters do not approve the extension, then you will collect the same rate that you collected last year. So it doesn't, it doesn't hurt you if you don't lose your millage, it's not shortened, there's no downside financially if the voters decide that they don't wanna approve the package. If the voters do approve it, then they're approving a maximum amount that you can borrow and they're extending the millage out for 30 years. And that will be in place to make the repayment on the loan. So I'll answer any questions and then I'm gonna walk you through three motions to adopt the proposed budget that has to be in the paper 60 days before the election. That gives the voters notice, we're gonna ask for something. Then you're gonna submit an application to the Department of Education, because they regulate all bond issues. And then thirdly, we're gonna ask you to pass a reimbursement resolution. And what that allows us to do under the IRS rules is to put a stake in the ground that as of tonight, if you write a check tomorrow for Rollins Elementary, that if the voters approve the bond issue and you take some of those bond proceeds, you can put it back in your bank account that you spent on Rollins. And the reason that we're doing that is it will give us the ability to spend the bond proceeds within some of those IRS timelines we talked about and just give us a little more flexibility. We're not gonna borrow more for it. It will just give us the ability to move between accounts legally by putting that stake in the ground tonight. So before we go through those three motions, questions about election, about what we're asking for? Anything related to that? All right, so I think Kelly has hyperlinks in your
I have
Oh, you've got them right there?
All three, yeah.
You want me to read them? You wanna read them? Hand them out to your favorite Board members?
Then hand it back to
I've heard that about you.
Okay, after you make that motion, will you hand it back to me so I can read it?
Sure. I'll move to adopt the resolution with the attached proposed budget of expenditures with tax levy for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and to include June 30, 2023 as printed.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. Hutchinson, to adopt the resolution with the attached proposed budget of expenditures with tax levy for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, to and including June 30, 2023 as printed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, one down.
Which one's next?
The application to the Department of Education.
Is that me? Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to submit an application for a permit to issue bonds with related documents for $265,945,000 in refunding and construction bonds to the State Department of Education and to employ First Security Beardsley as fiscal agent. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mr. Emerson to submit an application for a permit to issue bonds with related documents for $265,945,000 in refunding and construction bonds to the State Department of Education and to employ First Security Beardsley as fiscal agent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, last one is the reimbursement resolution.
I make a motion to adopt the reimbursement resolution authorizing the Springdale School District to reimburse operating funds used for the purpose approved for the application for a permit to issue bonds in the amount of $265,945,000.
I have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mr. Ramos, to adopt the reimbursement resolution authorizing the Springdale School District to reimburse the operating funds used for purpose approved for the application for a permit to issue bonds in the amount of $265,245,000. I mean, 945,000, I'm sorry. Should've had my glasses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Board. Dr. Cleveland, look forward to working with you on the election.
Thank you all.
Thanks for coming.
Well, that was, that was a big deal y'all just did. As you know, our, our current debt expires in 2041. And by asking the voters to extend it to 2051, that will generate our portion so that we can proceed with major renovations at Central Junior High and Southwest Junior High, as well as some additions at Central, I mean, at Springdale High School. So those are, that's some great
The, the, and, and the Beardsley Group being extremely flexible and really changing directions to where we were talking from last year is an accomplishment on both your part. Because, I mean, we literally have stopped and turned in a different direction to get to this point tonight. So kudos to you guys and the rest of the team for getting that into order for us to understand clearly last week so we can make this process easy tonight. So thank you for that.
Yes, and I'm obviously very pleased that we're not asking our patrons to pay anymore. We're not asking for a millage increase. We're just asking for a debt restructuring. So I'm excited about that and I know you all are too. The next item that we have for you this evening, Board, are the proposed elementary school zones for the 21-22 school year. I think I I had a slide on it. How do I advance this? There we go, like that. Okay. During this process, we had three goals. The first one was to obviously establish an attendance zone for the Jim D. Rollins School of Innovation, which will be opening this fall. The second was to rezone the students that are attending Lee Elementary this year, since we will be repurposing Lee for the 21-22 school year. And then finally, we wanted to look at all of our elementary zones and look at the number of students assigned to each elementary and try to make sure that we had those balanced as much as we possibly could. So you saw where Thursday, we reviewed the zones that were put forward. It does involve moving some students from their current elementary to a new zone for the 21-22 school year. I did not include the map overhead. So do you have any questions? Or is there anything, any, anything that you would like to discuss about that? We, we know rezoning students is a big deal for both the students and their families. And, but we're also confident that all of our schools are good schools. So if you go to another school the, the next year, it's, you're still gonna have your needs met and we're, look forward to students having a new experience, so. Any questions for me?
Another was talk about maybe at some point adding to the School of Innovation the lower grades, elementary grades. Is that still being talked about or is that not happening? That's probably a Jerry Cleveland question.
Well, we have the School of Innovation currently universal program or paid by, but Rollins Elementary School is supposed to be, help capture some of that. But we'll also have Dr. Stuman's school on the east side of town capturing a similar group of students that can feed to the School of Innovation, Don Tyson School of Innovation. But the zones for Jim D. Rollins School of Innovation, technically, those students will feed into Hester. So if that's the answer to your question, if you're wondering where they're gonna be to. Because I'm really getting here.
K through five, I know virtually they do, but are they ever gonna physically happen at the Don Tyson School of Innovation?
happen at the Don Tyson School of Innovation?
That would be your call over time, the school board. Right now, we don't qualify for another elementary school. We're just qualified for the current one. So we'd have to grow in need suitability, as per footage, at the elementary level before we can build a new elementary school. So technically, unless we put those students inside that building, the answer would be no.
I think that's what he was talking about, is moving some elementary kid age into the School of Innovation. We talked about that at one time, but we haven't talked about it that in a while.
When we elected to do the Jim D. Rollins School of Innovation.
That kind of went away. Okay.
And then, in addition, I think we have around 1,300 students physically at the School of Innovation this year, and next year, that number is going to go to around 2,000. And that's about, that's a pretty good size for that school. You can think of it in grade six through 12 as around 300 per grade is what we're kind of looking at. So yeah, it's going to be it's going to be equivalent to the size of the other two high school campuses. In fact, a little bigger, probably. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to, where's that, to approve the proposed elementary, the new proposed elementary school zones for the 2021-2022 school year.
There's a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mr. Emerson, to approve proposed elementary school zones for the 2021-2022 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The next item that I have for you this evening, Board, is the audit report for the year ended June 30, 2020. And tonight, we have with us Sarah Gentry. Sarah is a principal at, I can't remember what the J stands for. It's new. It used to be called Hudson Sisney, and now they've added a J. So I'll let Sarah explain that to you.
I'm going to get situated. Sorry. I don't want to drop anything. Yes, as Kelly mentioned, I'm Sarah Gentry. I'm with HCJ, used to be Hudson Sisney. We rebranded to HCJ. Our founding partners have long since retired, so we just spruced up in a rebranding. So we appreciate the opportunity to perform the audit. I'm going to take this off.
Yes, please.
I don't have a very loud voice, anyway, and that's a little bit hard to talk through. We appreciate the opportunity to perform the audit each year and to be here to present tonight to you guys. And we also appreciate Kelly and his accounting team. And we have a lot of questions. We ask for a lot of information, a lot of paperwork, and they always produce without any delay. So we really appreciate all of their hard work and want to recognize them in the process, because we know the audit is on top of their normal daily workload. So we appreciate that. Our responsibility in relation to the financial statements is to express an opinion that those financial statements are materially correct at any given point in time, so at 6:30, 2020, that they were materially correct. You guys report under the regulatory basis of accounting, which is a other comprehensive basis promulgated by the state of Arkansas and state statutes. So we will issue an unmodified, or what's referred to as a clean opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. And you'll also notice in our final report when you guys approve it tonight, that you will also see an adverse opinion on the GAAP basis, because you don't report under the GAAP basis. So that's the only reason why you'll see that. And on page four, we'll just walk through the statements, the balance sheet. You report under the fund basis of accounting, so you'll see your columns set up there. The general fund consists of your operating funds of the district and your restricted state funds. The special revenue funds consist of federal programs and food service. The other governmental funds consist of capital projects and debt service funds. And then your fiduciary funds consist of funds that the district holds in more of an agency capacity. So it's like your school clubs, BAN boosters, and so forth. Looking at your fund balance analysis, just kind of each one of your fund balances holds pretty strong positions. So your general fund has a fund balance of $24.6 million, approximately 4.8 of that is restricted for future state programs. And then the remaining $19.8 million is unassigned at this time. Special revenue has a strong fund balance of $12.8 million. It's restricted for federal program use. And then other governmental funds, which is your debt service and your capital projects, is $35.8 million. $34.9 million of that is assigned for future capital outlays or projects, and $902,000 is related to the sinking funds that are restricted for debt service in the future. On page five, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. The general fund experienced a net decrease in fund balance of $326,000, so almost a breakeven point with as many dollars as you guys have running through. Total revenues were consistent at $205 million. That's consistent with prior year. Current year revenues are mostly attributable to the property taxes and your state revenues. Property tax revenues were down this year by $2.5 million, and you'll also see that on the budget statement that we walked through. But that's because Washington County was delayed in their distribution of the property tax numbers, as you guys probably have heard and recall. So that caused delays in the receipt of those property tax payments. So you'll catch back up effectively in the next year. And then state revenues increased this year by approximately $3.4 million, which was due to growth in your student count and then also an increase in the per-student funding by $118 for students. That's a pretty significant increase in per-student funding, which led to that $3.4 million increase. Total expenditures of $190 million was approximately $5 million up from last year. The increases mostly due to increase in staffing to, you know, to manage all the additional student count numbers, and then salaries related to district growth. Stock and pay that was given by the National Board that previously had been paid directly from the state, ran through the school this year, is a difference in how they decided to administer that this year. And then just your normal experienced debt pay increases. And then you'll also see that capital outlays increased quite a bit this year with all the construction projects and the model projects that you guys have underway. The general fund also transferred $16 million to the debt service and capital projects funds this year. So still a good transfer of funds over from the general fund over to hopefully fund future projects for you guys. Special revenue funds have a net decrease in fund balance of $339,000. The federal revenues were down in the current year, mostly due to the prior year being the final year of a pre-K grant program that wasn't supplemented as much as what was originally anticipated by another program in the current year. Expenses were also down related to that same grant. So to offset the decrease in that grant money, the expenses were also down. Other government funds had a net decrease in fund balance of $14 million. Capital outlays increased this year by $8.7 million due to all your capital projects. And then debt-related payments were also up $2.1 million, paying down principal on your debt payments, on your bonds. On page six, you'll see the budget to actual that's required to be presented for both the general fund and the special revenue fund. The general fund experienced a net favorable variance of $4.5 million in the current year, and that was mostly due to net favorable variances in your expenses. So your expenses were down quite a bit from the prior year. Your special revenue funds had a net unfavorable variance of $2.4 million, which, as we noted, the pre-K grant that previously was mentioned, wasn't supplemented as much by the state as what they originally said when that other one didn't. They just, the federal government didn't continue on with it. So special revenue fund expenses had a net favorable variance of $3.1 million. That was due to the original budget was based on our actual, but since the federal revenues were down, you guys cut back on expenses and really watched it. The notes of the financial statements start on page seven. We're not going to go through every note. They remain consistent with the prior year's presentation. We do always like to kind of point out note five that outlines the importance of the district. And since the regulatory basis doesn't really, you kind of report more on a cash basis. When debt payments are made, you pay it out. It runs through your income statement instead of showing debt on the balance sheet. We do like to point that out, because that footnote gives you a little more detail as to future debt payments that are scheduled out over the course of time. As outlined in the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, the district expended approximately $28.6 million in federal monies this year. So that obviously subjects you to another level of audit, which is referred to as the Uniform Guidance Single Audit. So that's where we go into more of our compliance testing. And this year, we were required to test the Child Nutrition Cluster, the Child Care and Development Block Grant, and the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. So there was three programs this year that were tested for compliance. We had three findings that rose to the level of reportable TANF program. We noted a discrepancy in the termination of eligibility in our sample selected for testing. We tested 100 children in the program, and we noted 11 discrepancies, but only three of which had a calculation difference that would have made a difference in your level of funding. So there was only three of which that had a change in eligibility. This was due to misunderstanding the program's definition of gross family income. In subsequent to the audit, the program directors been retrained by the meanest. So TANF and the Child Nutrition Cluster, we also noted that the district, while they can provide payroll reports that substantiate all the salaries, the Uniform Guidance has a caveat that requires time and effort reports to be signed. And so there was a few of those that we noted that didn't have time and effort reports in their file. This was a finding, I think, in almost every district we did this year, because it was such an odd year with the COVID, and everybody being virtual, it was very difficult to get those time and effort reports signed and certified by those employees. So we noted one out of the 40 tested for TANF, and one out of the 21 for the Child Nutrition Program that we're missing the signed certification. And then in the Child Nutrition Cluster, we noted that the director of that program is performing a review of her own time certifications. And we just recommend that those be more class superior to that individual. And they're all, management's already in the process of making that process change. So we're also required to follow up on any prior year findings and make sure we don't see the same thing happening in the current year. We're happy to report that the district has corrected all prior year findings. So we didn't find some more of the findings multiple years in a row, which speaks highly, because that means they're taking the findings to heart and correcting. So that's good. And we are also required to test certain state statutes, and we're pleased to report we found no findings in our samples selected for state statute findings. We don't have to test every single one. They send us a list of the ones we have to test each year, but we didn't find any findings in those that we were required to test. So that's the audit report in a nutshell. There's a lot more that goes into it. But in a nutshell, that's the audit. And we're also happy to report that we had no disagreements with management over accounting policies or principles or anything of that nature. So we're also pleased to report that. Does he may have any questions?
Well, I feel I have to defend myself. I feel like...
Me, nice.
I feel like that. Kelly does a good job. Runs a tight ship, and we...
Yeah, we know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's talk about, let's talk about some of those findings, because obviously we don't want, oh, obviously, we don't want any. Last year, we had a problem with TANF. They came in to look at TANF last year. That was the preschool program. And the problem was they went about to verify the income guidelines and everything, and we didn't have the records. We had gotten rid of the records, because that's what we had always done, and nobody had ever asked for the records. So they couldn't verify. So they pulled it again, so they could verify. And so in the process of verifying, they determined that we had erroneously calculated, you have to meet income requirements to be able to participate. And there were some categories of income that we were excluding and saying, you don't have to include that, that we found out you did. For example, paid time off. Our people were just using their regular earnings, but you also had to include paid time off. We didn't know that, but we do now. So those were some of, that was some of the problems we had there. On the time certs, on the other two, well, first of all, Ms. Smith, our Director of Child Nutrition, that's all she does is child nutrition, I promise you. And she just had never stopped to think, you know, I need to take this over and get someone in the central office to sign off on my time, but we're going to do that from now on. And then, and then, you know, we're just going to clean that up. And then the other thing was, we had some folks that left before the semester ended, and we typically get the time certs completed at the end of the semester, so that, you know, makes sense, right? This is why I did all semester. And so we had some people that had left in midsemester, and in our checking out process, we didn't have them sign one, but we're going to from now on. So anyway, those are the explanations from my standpoint. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think it's, like Kelly said, we didn't have repeat findings. But Kelly does things to heart, and we hopefully don't find the same thing.
Sure. I don't want that to happen. No.
Board, any questions? And I need an emotion, I need an emotion. I'm tired tonight. I need a motion, please, to accept the audit as presented. I have a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mr. Bell, to accept the audit as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I will tell you, we love working with Sarah and HCJ. They do a great job for us.
But we still don't know what the J is.
I don't know what the J is.
Oh, Jones.
Jones. They acquired another company, and they picked up the J.
Yeah, yeah. But they're all still retired, so we said, well, we'll just stop all the...
Keep it simple. HCJ. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Board, the next item that I have for you this evening, as you know, we advertised for sale of properties, and I presented those to you last month, but there were two tracks that did not receive any bids on the first round, so we have advertised them again. And this time, we did not specify a minimum bid. So we received two offers on these properties. We're calling them Track Two and Track Three. They were both on bidder lane. On Track Two, we only received one bid. It was for $49,500. And on Track Three, we received two bids, one for $100,000 and one for $33,000. So it's, management's recommend, oh, go ahead, Dr. Cleveland.
Ms. Cook, the Track Two, that, what was the highest bid?
49.5.
Its estimated value that we paid for that appraisal was $280,000. So I have been thinking about what might be the best financial move for that potential piece and not accept the bid tonight as low, but potentially contract with a realtor company to sell that piece, try to get the highest value for the district. Track Three, in speaking to real estate agents across the district, and a couple that are close, said that $100,000 was likely a very good price for that track, depending on appraisal, that there are tracks going across this district, the school district, that are similar, that are bringing the similar price. So our recommendation is to accept that particular bid for that $100,000 on Track Three.
What did Track Three appraise for?
150. And I know, Mr. Emerson, you are in real estate as well. Your opinion on those two pieces of property, and Mr. Rollins, he dabbles in real estate, too. What are your, what is your thinking on those particular parcels?
All right, I'm doing math. I agree. I think Track Three, that's probably pretty close. $100,000 is, that's almost $17,000 an acre.
And if I'm not mistaken, Track Three has some trails in part of that property, and maybe some easements as well?
Okay, yep. Yeah, I would, I would be fine with 100.
Is that part of the property that, Mr. Ari?
Mr. Ari? Yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then, I mean, Track Two is, that's $11,000 an acre. That's pretty low. But then again, I've never walked on it. I don't know if it's...
With the value being...
At a hillside or...
280 is an interesting...
Yeah, that's way too high, but... What's the four and a half acres like on Track Two? I've never been there. Anybody?
That's what?
Track Two, the four and a half acres.
Yeah. It's got a building on it, I think.
Yeah, it's got a storage building on it. It racks around in the kitchen house.
It's pretty...
It's horse shoe shape.
Down by the road.
It's pretty flat, though, isn't it?
It's fairly flat.
Has road drainage?
On the sides of the house. I mean...
It's not a paved road.
We can pull it up.
It's pretty oddly configured with that piece of property in the middle of it. That's why I say it not garnering as much. But what do I know about it?
What would the board like us to do as far as that piece? The worst thing that you could do is hang on to it. I mean, there's no reason to do that. You could sell it and maybe contract with the realtor and try to get the highest price we can and then come back and decide whether to sell it or not.
It's unbidded upon.
No, there's one for 49.5.
I'm good with selling the one that's 100. I would think we could get a little more than 49 out of the other one, though, if we hang on to it and let somebody do a little marketing on it. I mean, I don't know real estate as much as these two guys, but, I mean, to me, that seems a little low. But I'll do what the majority wants to do. I'm not going to be the lone dissenter either way.
What do you think?
Back to my... Sorry.
It's okay. Work your magic.
Yeah, I mean, I would think you could get... My guess would be 75 to 100 for that four and a half acre of track. So I don't know if... I mean, I don't, I'm just rough math, but it's another 20... Another 25,000.
Was the present just way off?
Why do you think it was way off?
Yeah, for 280,000.
280,000.
That's...
What do you think maybe caused it to be so crazy high?
60,000.
If I remember correctly, moving back to the photo, I think that the ability to use it really for anything is kind of nonexistent right now unless you take in the piece of property that sits in the middle of it. It literally sits around it.
Well, and I believe there's an easement, though, for the driveway to access the back.
The back side of it.
But yeah, on either side.
Even if we were able to get 75,000 out of it, taking the real estate fee out of it, you're still going to make more than selling it for 49,000 tonight, correct?
Apparently, you would, yes. Yes, the act of... So you're not doing... Accept the $100,000 bid. Need to not accept or to reject the $49,000 bid.
Do that for now. Then figure out Track Two later.
If you'd like to do that, that'd be a good move.
I have a motion.
You'll be...
I'll move to accept the $100,000 bid on Track Three and reject the other bid on the other track.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. Emerson to accept the high bid on Track Three and to reject the bid on Track Two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Send us a map picture. Can you send us like a map picture? I know you had previously...
Sure, sure. I will do that.
I'll do some research.
Well, the seventh and last item, Mr. Emerson.
Feel good?
The seventh and last item I have for you this evening is a related party disclosure. I would like to ask the board to pass a resolution allowing the district to contract Ms. Rebecca Woods. Ms. Woods is an instructional facilitator at Elmdale Elementary, and she's the sister-in-law of Nick Emerson, board member. So this requires board action. We have a summer program that is called the CLIP Grant. And a team of folks led by Melissa Fink interviewed candidates to run these programs. And Mrs. Wood was unanimously selected as the best candidate to fill this role because of her experience. So if the board approves this resolution, we would pay Ms. Woods based on an hourly rate of $25 an hour, which is what we would pay anyone in this role for a maximum of 137 hours. So it's $3,425. And by state statute, if a relative of a board member receives a salary increase of more than $2,500 or a pay increase of more than $2,500, it requires not only action by the board, but it also requires approval by the state. So if the board approves us to use Ms. Woods in this capacity, then we would forward it on to the Department of Education for their approval as well.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution for the related party disclosure for hiring Rebecca Woods for the summer.
I have a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mr. Ramos to approve the disclosure agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
So I hope we do well by you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Cook visited with the curriculum and instruction team and said, "I'd really like to see some amazing things that are being highlighted." And I have an individual I think you're going to be really pleased to hear about this evening.
Maybe.
Okay, so I have Mr. Ty Davis back here. And I want to give you a little bit... I know many of you know him and the work that he's done. But I asked him to do something this year, and what was produced was phenomenal. So that's really what I'm here to talk to you about. Do you guys know this? Okay. So before I tell you a little bit about what he did for us, I want to kind of tell you a little story about an individual we have. So Bryson is a young man that we have in our district, currently a ninth-grade student at Southwest Junior High. He was previously enrolled at Helstern Middle School and at Young Elementary. He's been with us throughout his career as a student. He currently lives with his grandmother. He's also an individual with a spinal cord injury, and he receives homebound instruction, which he has received from Mr. Ty Davis for a number of years. And I heard a little bit about him through talking with Mr. Davis. And from that led into a conversation about what we were doing at the beginning of the school year. So if you'll notice at the bottom, there's a little symbol that's called adaptive. We're going to talk about that in just a second. So a little bit more about this young man. He's currently using his head switch to figure out how to work his wheelchair. He is skilled in communicating full sentences in a variety of ways. That include recalling his daily routine and making requests to watch specific videos. He also enjoys singing songs and making people smile. And I'll probably be sending you a video for you can see some of that happening that Mr. Davis made. But because I was keeping up with these two individuals at the very beginning of this year, when we realized that we were going to possibly go to remote or have virtual learning happening, we really wanted to make sure we were meeting the needs of all of our students. So I called in Ty and I said, "Hey, I really know you've done a lot of work for our district." If you can recall, he was also one of our technology specialists. He also did a lot with our computer science. And so if you look at our district curriculum, you will notice that there's a lot of different symbols. But the computer science curriculum is the one that he actually pulled all together. And that was a requirement a couple of years ago from the State Department. But if you'll also see a new one, and it's called adaptive. And we're going to talk a little bit about it, but you'll see achieve, reflect, create. And so I asked Ty if he would come in and really start looking at how could we meet the needs of these individuals in our non-core subject areas? And what was produced was pretty amazing. So I'm going to give you a set about it, but then I'm going to have you watch a three-minute video. So you're going to hear a little bit of repetition. But what he brought forward was this way to work with students in a remote setting or in a virtual setting. So adaptive, and you can kind of see this, have the ability or tendency to adapt to different situations. Arc is a portion of circumference of a circle, which is pretty powerful because we're talking about a portion of what a student receives. So these are some of the content they would see in their academics. And if you'll notice up there in the symbol, it's the computer science, physical education, music, and art. And then, of course, our EDU, which is the process of facilitating learning. So he actually came and met with me a couple of times. And then he went out and sought the support of other people. Ms. Craddock is one of them. She's an art teacher at Springdale High School, and kind of bounced the ideas of what this would look like. So I'm hoping this... Okay, so you're going to see a video on this, but he actually goes through the process of how does it go from the standard to giving a student choice based on their need to actually having them go through the process of doing the activity. So that's what you're going to see. The focus that he had was on music, PE, art, computer science. And that was allowing students to really meet that whole inclusive part that they wouldn't get in the math, English, science, and social studies. So originally, it was created for the virtual students that we have. It also aligns beautifully with the alternate assessment that Ms. Tisher talked about last month. That is called DLM. You've probably heard that, the Dynamic Learning Maps. It also allows us to have our diverse accommodations for our students' met and also those functional practices. So I'm going to show you now a video. It's a video that Ty created that really goes through the process. And you're going to hear some of the things I said again. Okay. Fingers crossed we're going to get... Oops. Okay. I might need you to click the video for me, if you don't mind. So it was a video. And so I'm so glad that Ty is here because if the video doesn't work... I think we need volume, too.
That is not just me.
That's a good one. So while he's getting that up in the morning, I just want to say a couple of things. I'm just going to kind of move to the... About this. So...
Here is an example of visual art lesson. To start a lesson, first, show the standard on the computer screen. Say, "Today." Students will generate...
Okay, here we go.
Adaptive Arc EDU is a modified curriculum that provides an array of adaptive lessons in music, art, physical education, and computer science. This was created for virtual students, students participating in alternative assessment, students that need diverse accommodations, and students that need functional communication practice. Throughout these lessons, you will notice repetition with variety and cognitive engagement derived from universal design for learning principles and the facilitation routines of show, say, wait, observe from the Dynamic Learning Map Writing Testlet training. Here is an example of a visual art lesson. To start a lesson, first, show the standard on the computer screen. Say, "Today." Students will generate and conceptualize artistic ideas and work. Second, show the interactive activities on the computer screen. Say, "Would you rather read a book or watch a video? Pick one." Give the student an opportunity to communicate a word. They can read a book through Tar Heel Reader or watch a short video through YouTube. Each of these activities will align to the lesson content areas. Select the activity from the student's feedback. If no student feedback is provided by the student, select one for them. After activating learning through the interactive activity, start the reflect section on the third step. User should select a DOK question based on the level of student learning and the knowledge gained during the previous activity. To move on to the fourth step, click on the adaptive logo. After clicking on the adaptive logo, user will be directed to the Create Lab. There are over 36 lessons identified with three different accessibility inputs to help individuals find accommodating activities. To start the fourth and final step, show the create task options and say, "Pick a task." For example, a student may choose to select the art coloring book, create tasks after engaging in a fine arts lesson. This covers the fourth step needed to complete an adaptive arc EDU lesson. To access these lessons, go to the Springdale Public Schools website, click on the District tab and scroll to Curriculum. Click on the Curriculum page and scroll down to the adaptive logo. We hope you get a chance to explore these lessons.
So I'll kind of repeat that last part. So if you go to our district curriculum, you'll see the emblem. You can click on it. And if you have not had an opportunity to get in there and just really just kind of click around, there are some amazing activities that the students could do. Something else that I'd like to highlight back on the other screen is when Ty put this together, he's got, as you can understand, a deep understanding of the needs of these students. And he knew exactly what the vision should look like. And he took feedback from a lot of different people. But I did want to highlight a couple of things. I did mention that the teachers could use it. But we've also shared this with the Arkansas Department of Education, their special ed department. And we've also, he shared it with the individuals that actually create our alternate assessment for feedback and also to use. He did a great job aligning these with the standards that are expected on the DLM assessment. And then the other thing that I think just really, makes me really happy is that because it is on our district website, it's available for anybody. So it's not just those that are in Arkansas or not those that are in our district, but really across the United States or across the world. So I'm very excited. And I wanted to highlight Ty because he does an amazing job. So if you guys could help just like thank him for all his work. And if you have any questions, I'm sure he's more than happy to answer them. But I'm just very excited about the work he's done in the special ed department. Do you guys have any questions?
So how many students right now will that reach? I mean, how many do we have that are homebound or that need a more adaptive...
The percentage of students that we would have, that I don't know. I would say it's probably about 3% of our overall 2,300 students or so. But I will tell you, when you get in there and actually use it, I think it's a lot higher than those that would just be virtual. It can be done in any class at any time for a lot of different levels.
It's very exciting.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My piece to this, if I can get it to change. Can you advance the slide?
Can you advance the slide for me? Thank you. It's just to do a quick graduation update, and if you'll go to the next slide for me, Mr. Shelton, thank you so much. We have been able to finalize our graduation days, times, and locations. And I know last time we spoke at our work session, we were still waiting on additional information from Bud Walton Arena and others. And so this graphic is our announcement of our 2021 commencement ceremonies. And so I just quickly wanted to run through this graphic with you and make sure that you don't have any questions. So you'll see first, we have Archer Learning Center that will be at the Springdale High School Pat Walker Theater on Friday, May 14th, and they will have two sessions. One session will be at 6:00 PM and the other will be at 7:30. Then the next morning, we will begin with Springdale High School at Bud Walton Arena. They will have two sessions, one at 9:00 AM and the other at 11:30 AM. And then we will move, not move physically, but move schools to Harbor High School. We'll still be at Bud Walton Arena, and their ceremonies will be at 2:00 PM, 4:30 PM, and 7:00 PM. And then on Sunday, we will wrap up our commencement weekend with Don Tyson School of Innovation. They will hold their commencement ceremonies, two of them, in their Performing Arts Center on their campus, and the times for those will be 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM. I will make sure that all of you receive invites for these, so that you can go ahead and get those on your calendars. And then each of these high schools will begin releasing this information now that we've announced it here at the board meeting, and all of the specifics that come along with this for the seniors and their families. And so we are very, very excited about this news.
I have a question.
Yes.
Dr. Greit may be able to answer, too. As far as the high schools that are doing multiple times, are, is the plan to separate it by alphabet or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we look at different options. I think it would be consistent. The easiest to do that kind of thing.
Okay.
It's best appropriate for your library.
Okay. Yes, and I know Dr. Davis, Mr. Jones, and Ms. Bortz also discussed the alphabetical division, just like Dr. Greit just did.
Are we going to stick with this?
Yes, unless we are directed...
Do we need to do some additional change to health guidelines, capacity constraints?
If, if for any reason restrictions were tightened, this could change, something beyond our control, but we do not anticipate any change unless there were a mandate to come forward that forced it to. So, and I actually had subject to change, and I was able to delete that today. That's how confident we feel about these dates, times, and locations. Yes.
I think that's Bud Walton's guidance, right? He versus Arkansas, they're saying that this is...
Yes, that's...
They're not going to change even if the governor were to release everything.
That's correct. Bud Walton will not be changing their guidelines, and they will use the same guidelines for their graduations for the University of Arkansas. And so for consistency for all of our seniors, the guidelines are very similar, just in a different venue for Archer Learning Center and Don Tyson School of Innovation. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Okay, so now on to our Springdale Digital Learning Plan. Just a quick reminder that last year, we were given waivers across the state to do some of the things that we did this year to accommodate our families. One of those was blended learning. This year, moving forward, any type of change to what we've done previously requires approval from the board and also from the Department of Ed. So I want to just present to you our digital plan. I did want to tell you about the steps. First of all, we are required to get stakeholder feedback. We have received about, feedback from about 700 people, from administrators, community members, parents, and you're going to see some of that in just a minute. We were also required to get technical assistance from the COOP, which we have done that. We need to get Springdale Board approval, and then once approved, we will send it to the, to DSE to get their approval. So there's a number of steps that we're going to talk about. So some of this, I know you've seen before, but I just wanted to reshare it. So of the, this is some of the data we collected. So of the administrators and staff who responded, 62% stated that they did not think blended options should be offered. Of those that did offer yes to it, 100% of them said there needs to be some, some things put in place for students and parents to meet criteria to be in there, and then also what are the criteria for them to continue in blended learning. There was also some concerns arise regarding the ability to accurately monitor the students because, as you know, they were on multiple different blended learning models. So we had our face-to-face Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, and so that was something that they said there was a little bit of a concern about. Most staff from the primary grades, in fact, I can't think of somebody that wasn't, said that they should not offer that for our younger students, a blended model. In the high schools, this data specifically for them, these were some comments. Students on blended miss more days of school and do, did not do as well academically. I'm going to show you some data in just a minute. Students that attended five days a week had less failing grades than those that were on a blended or virtual. Blended students were twice as likely to fail than a student that was attending five days. And then those that were Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Tuesday, Thursday, there was a drop, but they were very, there was very little difference between those two models. Just a minute looking at our MAP data. This is for grades K through eight. If you'll notice, on the top, we have math and we have reading. Down the left side, you'll see virtual, blended, traditional. And if you'll just kind of focus on the blue for a minute, this blue is indicating of those that actually met their growth. So as you can see, for math in the virtual, it was 42%. It did increase quite a bit for blended to 51, and then traditional to 52. And then if you look at reading, started off with 40% for virtual, went up 6% for blended, and then up an additional three points for traditional. So this was the information that we got from our MAP data. The other thing, this might be the first time you're seeing this, we actually pulled out the survey results, and as you can imagine, there was quite a few 600 results. So we tried to pick the ones that we thought would be most telling of what we saw. So you'll see both sides of this, but this is some information from teachers and staff that were, that was stated, nothing is as powerful as face-to-face instruction. The next one, blended allows students to take ownership of their learning. Number three, most students could not maintain a consistent sleeping schedule, so when they were in school for in-person days, they were tired. The next one, when students are not in the building five days per week, they are missing critical social learning. Assignments are often neglected, and teachers spend an inordinate amount of time catching students up and reteaching lessons that were already taught. And then the last one for the teachers and staff, I believe it would be best just to have two options, a virtual or face-to-face. It would be better for students to have that consistency. There should be some guidelines for students going virtual, and there should be expectations for continuing to stay virtual. That was from teachers and staff. When you look at the, if you could forward it for me, please, to the next slide. Oh, there we go. Parents. So parents, first one, bring all kids back full-time. Second one, I think the kids should be in the classroom. Third, my child has given up on school due to no more activities, teachers not being able to keep up with the different schedules. And there was some additional information, but he was an A student, and now he's barely passing and just making time until the high school is over. The next one, I like having the option for blended, but I'm not sure it will work for our schedule. If my kiddo is playing two school sports next year, which is likely, if I return full-time to my office, it won't work for either of us. Working from home, this sure has really made it an option for that family. Second, from the bottom, don't have it. This is referring to blended. And then the last one, would not change anything. Springdale's done a great job of teaching our kids during this pandemic and keeping them safe. And then, of course, some, what I would consider some of the most important were from the kids. And I thought this was really telling. We did not get a ton of feedback, and I do believe that most of this feedback was probably from the high school level, but I did want to share it with you. It's hard to teach well when people are always missing. I want to have a better school year next year. I appreciate the district accommodating different experiences during COVID, but I don't think blended should continue. And keep in mind, these are from the students. Students become more disengaged from home, and long-term, the format is not sustainable or equitable for the different groups that attend Springdale Schools. Communication with blended students needs to be more clear. We fall behind too easily. I'm usually an AB student, and I've had many Fs throughout the year. And then the last one, being a blended student changed my academic career, and I'm extremely hopeful that blended options will remain next year. My grades are better than they've ever been, with my lowest grade as 95. This is not because of an easier workload, but because the blended learning style challenged me and allowed me to self-pace. And then if they needed additional time, they could in the courses that they needed, and they were hoping it would continue for next year. So I just wanted you to see what was coming out from the different individuals. So I think we did come up with something that would meet what everybody was looking for. Mr. Emerson, I think he said, let's just make it very clear and concise. I think you were the one that gave me that. So I tried to put it in this format. What we are proposing for next year is that we have two options for our K-12, and that would be they can come five days a week onsite, or they can choose the virtual format in which they would go five days a week at DTSOI, and they would be learning from home. Something else that was brought up in the board meeting was about the requirements to get into DTSOI this year. We, we backed off a whole bunch on those requirements. We want to put those back in place, so they will have guidelines for DTSOI. We want to make sure that the kids that can learn virtually are actually in a virtual setting and have that parent-student, student-parent-staff meeting about the expectations of what it would be to be virtual.
So on that, on that slide where it's the met-growth true or false slide, the virtual numbers, that's all through V and right?
Yes. But I also want to be very clear that we pulled back the restrictions for what, who could be in there. And because we had students moving out, in and out, it, it made it difficult to get 100% accurate data. But yes, you are correct. And then what we would like to do moving forward is offer what we would call a blended option for our 11th and 12th grade students. These students can take online classes, up to two of those classes, and that, that will be based on their eligibility, based on a set of criteria, which we have. I think I've shared that with you, but I don't want sharing that again. Also based on their program of needs and the availability of the classes that we're going to offer. So right now, principals would be working on what would those classes be and what would be the eligibility requirements for those. So that's where we are right now with our plan moving forward. So do you have any questions about that?
I like it.
Okay. So there's two other things. Inside the plan, there's also, we are also required to have a policy for what discipline, grading, and attendance would look like. Very, it's just a one-page, very quick document that I shared with you. But I'm also asking your approval, not only on the digital learning plan, but also on the AMI plan. And let me just tell you, the AMI plan is when we have severe weather or if there's something that comes up, that the superintendent can decide that that day is a day for remote learning. Education still has to continue, but we're allowed to, we're allowed to request up to 10 days. And so I'm also asking for approval on that and then the policy. If you don't have any questions, I would ask for you to accept those.
I'll make a motion to approve the Springdale Digital Learning Plan to include digital learning plan, AMI plan, and proposed policy for discipline grading and attendance. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mr. Hutchinson, to approve the Springdale Public Schools Digital Learning Plan, the AMI plan, and proposed policy for digital learning, discipline grading, and attendance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all the work. I know you've all done a ton of work on this, and it's been very tedious and a lot of just back-and-forth. We appreciate it.
I think this is the right thing for kids. I believe that.
100%.
Thank you.
Hello, board. I've got a construction update. They've got all the seating in place, and it's, it's coming together.
Looks good.
Pretty good. Here's a different view looking at the stage. They've got all the wall panels in. We're putting in all the sound and, and lighting. So there, there are some of the rigging for on-the-stage, so it's really coming together. Springdale High baseball and softball locker rooms are pretty much, I mean, we just have to do the outside final grading, put in the batting cages, and it, it will be complete. They've got most of the painting done, just a few minor things to complete. Plumbing fixtures, lockers are set to go in pretty quick. So it'll, it'll finish up first out of the athletic projects. So Harbor, they're actually working on the exterior, trying to get it dried in, everything painted. On the interior, they've got the primer, and they actually are, are starting paint this weekend. So they're working Saturdays and Sundays to try to catch up from some of the bad weather we've had. So the wrestling, they're putting the window frames and everything in this week, and that'll finish up the exterior envelope. They'll finish all the interior painting and, and everything this week. They'll be putting in the HVAC, trying to finish that up, get it going, and then we'll be able to put the flooring in there and let it start acclimating. The parking lot, they got all the paving done, so really all, the only thing left is striping, and they'll wait and finish that the very last.
The flooring in the wrestling and dancing chairs, is that going to be a wood floor or is it going to be concrete with mats or what?
We'll have, part of it'll be a mat room, a mat floor, and the other part will be a, a dance floor, a wood floor.
Okay.
Pretty much like a gym floor. It'll have the same finish and everything on it as a, a gym floor.
Okay.
And that's all the update I have, if you guys don't have any questions.
How's Rollins going?
It's, it's going.
That didn't sound too encouraging.
I guess I left him out. They're actually putting the metal up out there. They started putting the roof panels on today. They had to stop early because of the wind. So the floor's in, in Area A. They will start pouring Area B tomorrow, if weather permits. And then once they get the floor done, then they'll, they'll move roofing panels over to there. They're hoping to have the whole, have it dried in, roof, side panels and everything in, in about a month.
We've got a lot of rain in the future.
Yeah, that's our, we need to get it closed in as soon as possible, then the weather won't really affect us.
Are we on schedules, too? Are we a little behind because of all the ice and snow hit?
Yeah, we're a couple of weeks behind because of the, the snow and the cold weather. But they've, they're, they're catching up. They're making progress out there. They're doing a lot of extra work on the front end while we're waiting on metal and stuff, so the metal's set to land next week for the cafeteria, which is about 6,000 square feet. So it, it's coming together. It'll go pretty quick if, if weather will permit, once they get started, you know, on the, on the roofing, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I have a hopefully hopeful report about COVID-19 over the last month in the district. 90 students and staff total tested positive. If you followed our daily numbers back at the peak of the pandemic, there were some days that we were getting close to 90 in a day. It wasn't quite that high, but 60 cases in a day was not uncommon. So to see 90 in a month's time is really good information. You see that that's 0.4% of on-campus students and staff. 16 of those 90 were positive. 16 of those 90 were positive staff members, or 0.6%, and 74 were students who tested positive, or 0.4%. That week of snow really helped us. We had already, we started to see the decline, and once the snow happened, it, it dropped off. So that is, is certainly one benefit of that week of snow. Of the 90 students and staff that were positive, we identified 184 students and staff as PCCs, and out of those 184, six tested positive. Five of them were student to student, one staff to staff, and the student to student varied across grade bands. We saw at least one at each elementary, at an elementary level, one at, at a middle school, one at a junior, and one at a high school. One of them had two, and I don't remember which one, but pretty evenly distributed. And then one staff to staff. So just to look back at where we've been, these numbers are, are great. Of course, we'd like to see zero, but in the context of the large number of people that we have on a school campus every day, March was really fantastic. You see, we started to decrease. After peaking in January, we started to come down in February, and like I said, really dropped off at, after that snow week. And I showed this graphic to you last month. This is the information that every Friday Kathy Laundre sends to the Department of Education to just keep an eye on what our data is. The, the lines at the bottom are such that you can barely read them at this point. I did include, you'll see up there in the top right corner, the data file for this graph. So if you want to go back and look at a week-to-week progression for each of these four categories, that's there in the slide, that you can click on that to do it. But, you know, obviously, when you see the last number of the students in quarantine at 165, when it peaked at 1,158, we're, we're going in the right direction. And the, the numbers down with the, especially the staff isolation and quarantines are, are almost non-existent now that we're getting lots and lots of staff vaccinated. Do you have any questions about the data?
Keep it up.
Do we have any idea how many staff are not vaccinated right now?
That is actually a very good question. I'm going to ask Mr. Donnell to come up, and he's going to talk about vaccinations, and he'll answer the question about what we know about staff vaccination.
So tonight, I just wanted to give you a brief update where we are with vaccinations. To date, we've had 1,575 staff members that have received their first and second dose. And as of Thursday of next week, we'll be at 1,963 that have received their first and second dose vaccinations, which is 60%, 66% of our staff, which is pretty amazing, I think, and I'm really glad to be standing here and be able to tell you that. Last month, I said it was a team effort. It truly was a team effort. I'm very thankful for Dr. Cleveland and the enormous efforts that he's put into this, the relationships and partnerships that he's built with local providers that have allowed us to do that. I want to say thank you again to Kelly Hayes, Kinder Clay, Kathy Laundre, Trent Jones, Jeremy Wyatt, Paul Miller, Victoria Hennessy with Community Pharmacy, and Hans Dresnik with Northwest Medical. And last month, I reported to you that we had 388 folks on the waitlist, and now we have zero folks on the waitlist. Yes, I, I agree. As we move forward, we'll continue to encourage our staff to, to get vaccinated and then also provide this document. That top link up there is actually from the state, and it'll give you every location in every town across Arkansas where you can get a, a vaccination. We'll continue to do that. And then today, to your question, Ms. Cook, we, the Communications Department and I sent out an anonymous survey so that no one felt like they were, you know, given any, any information they didn't want to give. It just asked about, have you received your vaccination, first or second dose? Have you received it, the Pfizer or the Moderna? We, we made distinguations between those because we wanted to know that specific information. And then also, have I not received my vaccination, but I'm planning on receiving that? That's right here on this slide. And you, I left a link there that you could go to that and see that, the survey also, and then what building. So I've just kind of looked through that already. We've had already 1,000 submissions to that just within the last few hours. So then we can take the data of, I received my, my vaccination not at a district event, at a local provider, and we can add that number to the 1,963 to get closer to where we are on district vaccinations with staff. Any questions? Okay.
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
I'm Madeline Lomax, and I'm the Vice President of SEA, stepping in for Cory Tucker tonight. SEA and AEA have been working hard to advocate for public education and educators across the state level during this legislative session. In previous years, we've worked very hard to keep our teacher retirement intact. That work is still holding and has proven to be long-lasting because we've worked hard to create positive relationships with legislators and to increase their awareness about the importance of the Arkansas teacher retirement system. We are also still hopeful that the increase in per-pupil funding will pass as a result of Adequacy Committee. And as we are beginning to hopefully see the light at the end of the tunnel during this pandemic, SEA is continuing to donate masks to teachers who are having shortages. We are eagerly waiting for everyone to have the opportunity to receive both doses of the vaccine. We've made it this far together safely, and we want to continue to do so. SEA would like to extend a big thank you to everyone who made it possible for our Springdale staff to receive the vaccination. I'm sincerely grateful that I was able to be, get fully vaccinated at SOI this year. And a lot of thought and effort went to, went into organizing the plans for vaccination. And as efforts continue, teachers are still getting vaccinated, and that hard work to ensure safety for all does not go unnoticed. So we appreciate all of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any Patreon comments? Before I adjourn, I did, I'm going to take my mask off for a minute, and I did want to say something. This week is our year anniversary of having to shut down school. And even saying that out loud now, a year later, just, I still look back going, what happened and how did we get there? I mean, we, I remember that board meeting of that week, we talked about whether or not we were going to the National School Board Association workshop. We talked about, you know, everything going on in the weeks to come, and people had started asking, what do you think will happen with school? And I was like, oh, it's going to be fine, it's going to be fine. And then all of a sudden, Friday came, and the governor shut us down. And I just want to say personally, thank you both to our board, to our administration team, to Dr. Cleveland, to all of our principals, teachers, family, SROs, everyone, from food service to, especially food service this summer. Everyone has gone above and beyond the last year to make sure that all students and families in Springdale had their needs met. And no matter who I talked to across the country, no matter who, what school district I heard about, it was our school district that always stood out and made me proud. And I, from the bottom of my heart, just want to thank you for all that you've done, and no one may ever tell you, and you may never get the recognition that you really deserve, but thank you. Our students are better for what all you've put forth and you've done over the last 365 days. And we are so thankful for your time and the energy and, and that you've put into our school district and our students. So, thank you. And with that, we are adjourned. See y'all next month.